We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. It is August 17th, 10 o'clock. Two of the three county commissioners are here. Jeff is under the weather and he is unable to be here. And we are also 14, 15 days away from WBU being picked. With that, we will go to consents and approvals.
There are 116 exoneration listings for $91,263.81. There are three replacement tickets for $838.40. Minutes from August 10th, 2022. Vouchers, General County, $112,134.97. Cole Severance, $15,0091175. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,514.56. Camp Muffley, $18,166.72. Mason Dixon Park, $1,070.89. Mon County Center, $2,856.66. Transportation levy, $59,125.84. The library levy, $14,511.87. Reallocated coal, $14,000. Assessor's valuation, $87.40. Day report center, $64,931.10. The Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $5,275.68. Parks and Recreation, $31,499.60. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $4,171.56. 911, $8,528.67. Camp Muffley, $620.67. Mason Dixon Park, $42.26. Mon County Center, $209.21 for voucher total of $429,852.41. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary matters, or fiduciary orders for August 17th, 2022.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented?
Second problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have
Two fiduciary.
Two other fiduciary matters. The first one is the objection to creditor claim in the estate of Lee Ann Williams.
I move that we hold on this claim pending decision from the administrative law judge as to the validity of these charges.
Second, and just for clarification, it's in the court, so we're going to wait to see what happens before we rule. So with that, problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Then there's the second one.
And the second one is the fiduciary commissioner recommendation in the estate of Linda Lawrence.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the fiduciary commissioner and deny the petition.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we, that is it, correct?
That is it. Yep.
Great. Okay. Introduction of new employees. County administrator, or it's now going to be Colleen Cooney, we're going to introduce and we're going to make her stand up and come over to Sarah Maloney, litter control officer, full time.
So this is Sarah. She has been hired for the litter control officer. Her first day was August 16th, 2022. She will be a full-time employee with a salary of $40,000 with a six-month probation period.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second, and just for clarification, Tim, who's done an amazing job, is retiring. And that is why the position has opened up and we're very fortunate to have Sarah and we're very excited. She actually started yesterday and we didn't scare, Colleen and I didn't scare away, so I know that things will be good. Problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I would like to welcome Sarah. Again, Tim has done a wonderful job for us, but he told us a while back that he was retiring and we went through the whole posting and we're so lucky to have someone of Sarah's qualifications apply for the job. And I look forward to seeing what you do in that job. I know you're very eager and anxious. And that's great because we have a number of things going on in the county that, you know, in addition to your your management of the litter control crew, also your abandoned and dilapidated building enforcement duties. Specifically, I just got, I got an email yesterday about the Cassville one. So I just want, just so they're on your radar screen, there's a, there are buildings on the corner of Route 7 in Cassville Road. It's somewhere near Hando's and the former Cassville post office that has been relayed to Tim and it's somewhere in the works. But if, eventually if you give us the commission a briefing on as far as where that one stands. There's also, there's Route 7 abandoned trailer and abandoned house.
Okay.
Apparently people are coming and picking the trailer apart for, to sell the tin for.
Ah, yeah.
What I, so anyhow, it's an, it's an eyesore.
Sure.
And then there's a Collins Ferry property that keeps, keeps coming up on our radar screen because you might know, it's a, it's been a very, it's been a real pain in the rear end to the city.
Absolutely.
Because there's one property that's
It's right down the corner.
I think I know.
It abuts 10 different residents that are on the city side.
Yeah.
And again, as we, as we discussed whenever we interviewed you, once you settle in and kind of see where our ordinance is, I would, I'd like your opinion, your assessment of whether our ordinance is strong enough and whether that to make it stronger needs to go to change the state statute or whether it's something we do locally because it seems like a lot of these problem, problem buildings, you know, you do all, everything you're supposed to do and they step right up to, right up to the line. If they have to have their grass cut by 30 days, day 29, they're cutting it.
Yeah, right into the line.
And three, four months later, we're right back. So we need to figure out, and also how that all ties in, how this all could tie in with the new state law where the auditor's office has a fund available for, for taking care of some of these buildings. So again, that's a, that's not an assignment. That's just kind of an awareness.
Absolutely.
And we look forward to working with you on that. So and if, obviously you know the commission's an open door. If you need anything, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Great. Thank you.
We're here to help you be successful.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And just so you understand, I also gave her one yesterday too.
I believe her and Tim are going on my way.
But we appreciate it and we look forward to working with you.
It's second to roads. When we go out in the community, everybody's got a road complaint and we bring those back to Department of Highways. But the second most complaint we get is these abandoned and dilapidated buildings.
Definitely.
And we will make sure your phone number is out there before ours, so.
Good deal.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. We're very excited. Okay. Carrie Blaney, head county clerk, going Jason Trapp, going from part, or going to part-time temporary. How you doing?
Good. How are you doing today?
Good morning.
Brad Botkin, on behalf of county clerk Carrie Blaney. It's my pleasure to present to the county commission the following new employee in the county clerk's office. This is Jason Trapp. He has been hired as a part-time, temporary, non-exempt employee and his start date was August 15th, 2022. He's a graduate assistant getting his master's in history at WBU.
I recommend that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Welcome to the county.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
I majored in history, so.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay. We have now, anyone wanting to speak to comments from the public? We are wide open. We're open, going once, twice. Comments from the public are over. Okay. Resolution, safe streets and roads for all. And did you want to read that?
I will read it.
And why we have it.
Is anybody here?
Is there anyone here for that? No.
Okay.
Okay. You are.
So this resolution is for a grant that the MMPO will be submitting. It reads, whereas traffic crashes are among the leading cause of deaths and injuries in the world, the United States and the city. And whereas death and injury on our streets is unacceptable and serious crashes are preventable. And whereas streets and transportation systems have traditionally been designed primarily for maximum vehicular capacity and mobility rather than safe accommodation of all modes and users. And whereas the jurisdiction's strategic goals include protecting the safety, health, and security of its residents, businesses, employees, and visitors. And whereas Vision Zero provides a framework for reducing traffic deaths and zero, or, nah, and serious injuries to zero while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. And whereas Vision Zero focuses on safety as a primary objective for our transportation systems. And whereas successful Vision Zero programs are a result of both a complete government approach, i.e. interdepartmental coordinated initiatives and community supportive Vision Zero objectives and action plan. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Montegalia County Commission hereby endorses the Vision Zero goal of eliminating deaths and serious injuries on area streets with an emphasis on protecting the most vulnerable users of the local transportation systems. The Montegalia County Commission will work with the Morgantown-Montegalia Metropolitan Planning Organization to achieve Vision Zero goals.
I'm sorry.
The Montegalia County Commission requests staff to engage all relevant departments in supporting implementation of the Vision Zero action plan with recognition that many other community stakeholders and partners will also have important roles to play. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented?
Second, problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Colleen Cooney, grants?
I have a request for reimbursement for the governor's highway safety program. Safe Community is $864.13. Impaired driving in the amount of $3,245.71. The VOCA grant in the amount of $8,464.81. And the SEEP grant in the amount of $2,694.92.
I move that we approve the president signing the documents as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Correspondence, letter from Peggy Brooks resigning from Decker's Creek. Public service district, I'm sorry.
So it's self-explanatory. She's been serving since 2014 and she feels it's time for her to resign. So that's been posted on our website and we have an application for her replacement.
Okay.
Do you have any others? I have one.
I do.
I would like to make a clarification. I received this from the Mon County Deputy Sheriff's Association and due to the controversy going around with Big Daddy Guns, there's some misconception on who requested the money for a local group to fund students and this is, this is what they have written. We, the Mon County Deputy Sheriff's Association is an apolitical nonprofit organization. We utilize a business to solicit funds for various programs that our association supports. Currently, we are raising money for back-to-school program and during this fund drive, our solicitors contacted Big Daddy Guns along with every other business located in Mon County, West Virginia. While we appreciate the support of all businesses that participate in providing donations, we as an association maintain a position of neutrality in controversial community matters. We are currently at the end of our solicitation period as we begin working with other organizations in the county to prepare backpacks and school supplies for this fall. Any donations that were raised would be happily received. However, they must be directed to our fundraising company as we are contractually obligated. Again, I want to thank you for your support, but the Mon County Deputy Sheriff's Association does not approve of any fundraising competitions on our behalf. And I just wanted to read as a clarification. Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business. Okay. New business. A, consideration of requisition number 68 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
This requisition is in the amount of $893,958.74.
I move that we approve the requisition number 68 as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. And just for, for the knowledge, this is the 893,958.74. That's the regular deposit into the excise tax account. And that's less the admin statutory lien of 100K and the tax admin fee.
Okay. Problem move, second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, again, just to make sure. Okay. Consideration to approve modifications to the formal policy and application for the use of the courthouse square.
I move that we approve the policy for use of the courthouse square as presented?
Second, do you want to just clarify? There were two points that we wanted to clarify.
Correct. Yeah, there's two things. One was, we had a request for use of the courthouse square and it involved the use of craft beer vendors. And our policy prohibits that. So what we wanted to do is be able to address these requests on a case-by-case basis when they come before us. So we had to modify our policy to do so. So that's what we're, what the policy does. It allows us to consider the presence of alcohol in events that are held on the courthouse square. And it changes the application so that there's actually a question, so that if that question is answered yes, then it goes through a whole process of, okay, have you talked to ABC? And everybody else that would need to make sure that they're approving that. So it just gives us more flexibility on a case-by-case basis to address these issues.
And it sets it in motion so there's no discrimination on one over the other and that's why, what we needed. So I second that problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Interesting. Consideration to approve a request for the use of the courthouse square by Gidan, Gida, sorry, Creative on September 24th, 2022 for the High Street Festival event.
I move that we approve the request as presented?
Second?
My only question is, is this is a, the application is for, is our old application.
Okay.
So you just need to redo the paperwork, but assuming, you know, we'll answer the questions as they come up on the application, but.
We would approve it as, if it meets our guidelines?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I also want to thank Jamie for you doing that because that was something that we've been getting more and more requests on and it just resolves an issue down the road. So we appreciate your help on that. Okay. Consideration to approve modifications to the county commission's paid leave policy.
Move to approve policy changes as presented?
Second, and you want to?
The, we, when we changed this a couple weeks ago, there was one small clarification we left out and that was in regards to the question of availability of advanced leave. So what we did is we added one, one sentence to the end of that section where it says, under this policy, an employee may be granted advanced leave in an amount. And what we added was not to exceed the total amount of leave to be accrued during the calendar year. So that just makes a, it clears up a paperwork payroll, payroll concern. So that's the only change.
So problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This one I'm very excited about. Consideration of the authorization, authorizing the question to move the town of Star City's regular election day for the choice of a mayor every quarter and for the choice of the members of the common council to the county ballot occurring on the same day as the regularly scheduled statewide primary election beginning, with the election be held in the year 2024, to be placed on the 2022 general election ballot. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Jamie, one second. I'm pulling up the actual order.
Right. Find that.
Okay, here it is. Yeah, there's an actual order. Okay. I just wanted to make sure the order was there. I'm I move that we approve the request as provided, authorizing the president to sign the order as presented?
Second, and do you have any discussion on it since people can understand what we're really doing?
Yeah, and there's no one here from Star City?
Not yet, not till 11.
Basically what this is, is the town of Star City is interested in moving their election cycle to the regular county-state election cycle. So this sets that process in motion. So they have to have something on the, they're putting it in front of the voters of the city of town, of the city of, Star City. The town of Star City, there you go. To vote on it in this upcoming election. So it had to come before us to be put on the ballot. And the Star City residents will vote on it in November.
And I want to thank the individuals in the Star City leadership. I know that the three county commissioners have looked forward to possibly seeing that all three cities, the next three cities, which would be Morgantown, Westover, and Granville, consider putting their elections on the ballot during a regular county or statewide ballot so that more people will get involved in the voting process. And that's what I'm hoping to see. So with that, problem move, then second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Congratulations. Reports from elected officials. I see you're down here, so, oh, we have two. Sorry, I didn't.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to remind everybody that if you haven't received your tax bill for 2022, to give the office a call, we have a bin upstairs with several hundred that we have tried to forward to addresses provided to us by the post office and they're still coming back. So we know there are people that haven't received their bills. So they can either call the office at 304-291-7244 or they can go online to monsheriff.com and pay online or get their amounts there. I just wanted to, because discount is
That's what I was going to ask.
Until September 1st.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Very much, Kelly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Andrew, how you doing?
I'm fine. How you guys doing?
Good.
Good morning, Andrew.
All right. Well, good morning. Andrew Gasprey, Director of Planning for the county. This is a mark your calendar announcement.
I have to.
Tuesday, September, or excuse me, Thursday, September 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Mountaineer Station. We are going to have a comp plan fair. If you recall, we've been working on the comp player all year, comp plan all year for the county in tandem with the other municipalities and the MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And we are co-hosting an event at Mountaineer Station from 5:00 to 7:00 on September 8th in order to show different stages because they're not all at the exact same point in their crafting of the individual comp plans. And we will be rolling out our draft of the comp plan. Again, there's still plenty of time to give feedback, et cetera, on that. There'll be open table format so you can flow through, see what's there. It's no pressure, no talking heads, but it gets a chance to engage with people and they have your questions answered and give your feedback on the various comp plans. And the event is also accessed via free PRT that evening, kind of like during the football games and stuff. And free parking and Mountaineer, Mountain Line is also doing, trying to show how, working together, we can all get a good multi-layered system to help you get where you need to go and answer the questions you need to answer so we can have a better vision for the future of the kids. Well, I have one question that I want, since the media's here. Where is the Mountaineer Station? Mountaineer Station is
The hospital that.
I know, but I No, that's an excellent question. Because I know someone's going to say, oh, well, it's, I went somewhere. Yeah. Yes. It is, it is at the complex where the hospitals are, the big parking lot right across from Applebee's there on the Patterson Drive area. It's the glazed-in area with the glass lobby. And that's why you said the PRT is free because it will go right Right there. Okay. Exactly. And that's why I wanted that clarified. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
We appreciate it.
I appreciate all your efforts to make it very accessible.
And make it uniform too. Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I have an update for you.
Yes. Hey, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Latina?
Latina male administrator of town of Granville. So I'm actually just going to read to you
Sure.
from Potestas so nothing gets lost in translation.
Okay.
We have received the mapping from Consura and we have met the utility companies in the field for locations. We're putting this information as well as the right-of-way limits on the site plans now. French Engineering has been sent a draft copy of site plans last week and they're incorporating some items that they have identified as needing fixed. We anticipate that we will send French the site plans and profiles next week so they can begin their layout of the pole locations. Following that, we will need to dig test pits in the field at the pole locations to verify utility clearances. That's why I didn't want to put it in my own words.
Yeah.
Yes. Right. Well, this is great. I mean,
Thank you very much.
Could you just clarify?
I'm not able to remember.
Could you clarify for the media and everyone, what are we talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. The town of Granville traffic signals.
That would be by Chick-fil-A and?
Wendy's, Chick-fil-A, Panda Express, that area
Which is very well
and coming out of Granville Square and at the intersection of University Town Center Drive.
And it's much needed.
These are the two necessary, well, that's the study is to decide what's necessary and to what level. But the county, the city of Granville, and the developer are all working in concert on this project. So.
All right. Thank you.
We appreciate the update. Thank you. Yeah, in English. Okay. Thank you. Sean?
Okay.
Since we?
Since our last meeting, last Thursday in the morning, I, it was Thursday, it's the second Thursday of every month is, is meeting day. Started off at 8:30 in the morning with MAP Executive Committee meeting and then a RED team meeting. That's the Runway Extension Development Team. And then Mon County Development Authority meeting. And then we had a bid proposal meeting with, regarding a event that we're trying to bring to, to the area. After that, in the evening, I had a meeting with Mickey Reinhardt from the River Road Volunteer Fire Department to discuss a couple communication issues. And then I actually went to the fair after that, so I got a chance to get out to the fair because I had a pretty busy week and that was the only chance I had that Thursday. But it was wonderful to see the kids and all their accomplishments. And actually, I wasn't at the animal cell, but Ronnie, Ronnie Lightold purchased on my behalf and I actually bought a cow.
Oh, really?
The name of the, the name of the individual was Carson Moore.
Oh.
I believe that's correct.
Yes. I know the Moore family.
Yes. So again, Ronnie, Ronnie was there and made the purchase for me and then he, he told me that I bought a cow.
Noble.
I honestly don't know what to do with it, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
But Carson, very, great job. And all the kids, great job. I think I told you where I got a chance to talk to Emma Saulers who wrote us, who wrote us a note to come to the animal cell, which is actually this Saturday. So, and then on Friday, I was moving my daughter back to Wesleyan. I had a call with the, we all sat on a call with the Clay Patel FFA. And then I had a call with my broadband consultants. On Monday, we had another meeting with the bid proposal team for that event that we're looking to bring to the area. And then in the evening, I went to the Arts Council of Morgantown/ YCF Grants Award Ceremony. And that's the ceremony where they give out the grants that, based off the funding that us and the city. And this year, for the first time ever, we had a private contribution from the Tanner family. So it was very cool to listen. There was 14 different awardees. And then there was a couple additional ones, like Star City's going to do
Right. Got a pedestrian, which is what they've been looking for.
They're going to do a mural and so, again, that's just a great opportunity, a great example of us finding two entities. We were doing the arts grants and we always are like, I know Tom and I aren't qualified to, to make decisions regarding ants, regarding grants, art grants. But Commissioner Hawkins, maybe. You know, he had a lot more expertise in that area. But we three decided to bring in the Arts Council and YCF, who has a history of managing grants very efficiently and effectively. And so the city and us give money to them and then they administer the grant program. And it's, and we've started that in 2018 and it's been working out wonderfully. So anyhow, Tuesday, I had a call with Joe Fasekia from Mountaineer Country CVV. We talked about the needs for this one opportunity that we may bring to town. And we also talked about the needs for the track bid. So I had him on a call with some, Mylan Park Foundation Executive Committee members to just talk about the needs for these events and how we need to prepare to be successful. I did miss the Clay Patel Senior Dinner because my truck was in the shop. But I did make the Volunteer Fire Association meeting last night and I appreciate Chief Lipscomb for having everybody there. At Brookhaven, last night was at Brookhaven. And I'm always interested in listening to the views of volunteer fire department members. Today's a regular day. We have our bid proposal team tag up this afternoon. And then this evening, I have MAP meeting and the business after hours, which I'm not really sure where's at, where it's at. So I have to figure that out by the end of the day.
Where?
Don's Appliances.
Don's Appliances. There you go. Yep. Well, maybe after I go to that, maybe I can go across the street and get a workout in. It's been, it's been a while. We've been pretty busy. Thursday, or tomorrow is Mylan Park Board Meeting in the morning and then we have our MMPO meeting tomorrow night. So look forward to that. I'll end the week, Friday, we're heading out of town for a family trip for my wife's birthday. She, her birthday is Sunday, so we're, we're heading out of town to get some downtime. And won't be able to do it publicly. And won't be able to do it publicly until next week, but happy, early happy birthday, if you're watching. I do, it's a jam-packed meeting, all of our meetings are jam-packed. I am, appreciate the efforts of Star City to come over to the general election schedule. I'll, I'm, I'm less forceful than Tom. I will say that for all the other entities, the county is here and ready to help. You know, this is something that it saves the municipalities an expense, and in my opinion, it brings more people out to vote. But we're here, we're not here to tell you what to do. We're here to tell you, we're here to help, if you want to. So again, Star City's asking for help, and we're going to assist them. And we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And maybe that's a microcosm for, you know, other municipalities to follow. So that's all I have, Tom.
Okay. As Sean said, this has been a very eventful week, and then next week, we're really packed. First, I want to thank Latina and Granville. I think, I really appreciate you being on top of this, and I think the public doesn't understand what it's like to just put in a light. And it is an enormous process to work through DOH, go through the process, and it just doesn't happen when you just put up a light. And I want to thank Granville because this is something that you all said was a problem. We agreed, and we're working together on it. And I think it will be resolved. It's just now getting all the paperwork done. So I do really appreciate that. Second, as was mentioned, Wadestown has their show, live show, this Saturday. I know that both you and Jeff can't be there, but I'm honored because I will be representing the county commission, and all I will say is that after the three of us talked, we have a major announcement to make out there, and we're very excited to work with them. So I'm looking forward to that, and also seeing the show. I agree. It's something that is going to bring enormous economic development out to that area.
Just, will Wendy allow you to buy any animals?
Well, yes. The problem is, when we do that, she gets attached to it. And she raised, she had raised rabbits and so on, and her friend raised a cow, named it after her, and was crushed when they actually provided the meat for that. I mean, it was something, but no, we're very excited about that. Also, I did attend the state track meet yesterday. We are moving forward on making an application for the state track meet. We now have proven that we can put the four thousand seats in there. We have a design, and what I'm going to say is, I know we're going to do a better presentation than Lately Field because we now know what they do and what we're going to be able to offer. And I can throw this out. We will be offering the swimming complex for downtime and the basketball arena. So that's just one other thing that we're going to able to do, plus some other special caveats that we're going to do. And then we would be able to fill the hotels with, you know, for one night, you know. So we're really excited about this.
And one thing related to that, because it's something we're working on, but we're, we're going to improve the parking.
Yes.
So, you know, and there will be a thousand parking spaces when we finish the improvements to the parking. So that's something that also, you know, you guys will be able, and Joe's, that's what I was talking to Joe about. So Joe's aware of that. And, you know, that's also something that, you know, one of the only complaints is we've been so, so successful up there, that sometimes the parking's a problem. But we're, we're going to be increasing the parking and, and working on that. So it works out for everybody.
Yeah, we're very excited, and I really think that our application, the thing that people don't understand is you have to turn in by November, but then it's a four-year commitment, and we are really looking forward to it. And I've never seen so much, I mean, we have such a mixture of people from people who are on the SSAC Executive Committee to local businesses and groups and agencies, and everyone's working together because we want to get that tournament here. And it's the week after WVU graduation, so it's a dev week. So it even, the hotels are interested because that happens to be a real bad dev week for them.